Welcome to the monthly meeting of the Wycomico County Board of Education. As always, the meeting is being livestreamed and videotaped, and we always begin our meeting with a pledge to the flag. Today, Vice Chairman Mr. Michael Murray will lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, 3.2, approval of today's agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. 3.3, it's our moment of silence where we recognize our fallen colleagues from, since the last meeting. We have several this month. Mr. William McCrory, Bill, as he was known, graduated from Y High in '68 and then went on to graduate from U M E S and had 33 years of service in our school system. Lindsey Nicole Hampton was the granddaughter of a former school board member, Mrs. Carolyn In nearby Worcester County, a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Eric Cropper passed away. He was the president of the Worcester County School Board. And then recently, Dr. Henry Wagner, who had retired from Dorchester County but worked with us, he was Principal James M. Bennett from '02 to '04, and then Director of Secondary Education from July '04 to 6/30/07. So if you would just take a few minutes and honor these folks in your own way. Thank you. 3.4, public comment section of the open session meeting. Members of the public have the opportunity to speak during three-minute time allotments. Public comment section of the agenda is an opportunity for the superintendent and board to listen to individuals' comments on topics concerning Wycomico County public schools. The board chairman has the right to limit public comments in length or those concerning personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual individual's appeals or legal matters that are before the board, negotiations and topics that are more appropriately addressed in closed session or privately with a staff member. So I have the folks that signed up for public comment, no particular order, just the way they were handed to me. So Pamela Jones has requested public comment. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. I have, with the new coming school year, I want to let you know, I have three children in your school district, six-year-old and a couple eight-year-olds. The six-year-old is very excited to be able to come to school this year. He did participate in the summer programs on, at the schools, and those were great opportunities. All three boys love that. My twins are going into second grade. My biggest concern right now is masks. Now, I firmly believe COVID is a very serious thing. I've been vaccinated, I was one of the first in line, being an educator, I jumped at the chance, okay? My husband's been vaccinated. I firmly believe everybody should get vaccinated if you can, okay? And I believe we should protect everyone. Firmly believe that. Putting a mask on a six-year-old and eight-year-old, I don't think is the best way to do it. One, the government is very clear, vaccines are the number-one best way to protect yourself. Now, I have no, no problem with people here wearing a mask. You know, you do what you feel is best for you, and I have no problem with that, okay? But when we start putting them on children, one, we have to learn a couple things about masks. Paper mask and the mask that, the cloth mask that we give our kids, don't stop COVID, okay? The theory is that it stops you from breathing on someone, but it comes out the sides. It comes out the top. If you see a kid wear a mask, one of my twins wears it on his chin, so the teacher spends more time telling him to put it back on his face. Now, what happens every time she says, "Put it back on his face"? He touches it, he touches his desk, he touches his classmate, he touches a pencil. Now he's spread it everywhere, because now he's touching things that he shouldn't have been touching to begin with, because he was touching his mask, okay? Now how do we protect people if we don't put everybody in masks? The people who need protected, need N-95 masks. An N-95 medical-grade mask prevents COVID from getting to that person, okay? So if I am concerned for my personal safety, I would be in here with an N-95. Like I said, I've been vaccinated, I have, I'm not worried about it, okay? If I have a child with pre-existing conditions and I'm worried about them, I would put them in an N-95. If there's a teacher or a staff member who chooses not to, doesn't want to, or can't get vaccinated, N-95. As opposed to forcing everyone to make accommodations for the one or two people who can't choose not to, won't, whatever. Those are their personal choices. I've got no problem with anybody's personal choices, okay? My problem is, the other problem we have with masks is nonverbal communication. Seventy to ninety-three percent of communication is nonverbal. Think about when you talk to a kid and as a teacher, you correct them, okay? As a math teacher, I do a lot of correcting. My nonverbal helps me communicate that I'm not mad at you for getting that wrong, I understand. But if my face is covered, there's no nonverbal, okay? And I've got, one of my boys coming home upset, because he thinks he got yelled at because he could not understand the nonverbal from a teacher, because there was no nonverbal. That's important. And I'm up.
Thank you very much. Joan Smith, WCEA President on Reopening Schools.
WCEA has advocated for the health and safety of educators, students, and families. Our position has not changed. With appropriate health and safety protocols in place, CDC, Health Department, and national guidance, and with regard to things could change at any minute pandemic status, WCEA supports the return to imperfect learning. Now, as the evolution of the virus continues, WCEA supports a layered targeted approach to mitigate transmission of the coronavirus and proper containment of positive cases and/or outbreaks. WCEA supports layers of health and safety protocols including increasing access and promotion of vaccines, subscribing to CDC and federal guidance, masking for all, maintaining social distancing and the use of barriers, continuing increased access to hand washing, hand sanitizers, and other preventive items, full disclosure of inspection and measurement to determine the safety and wellness of our workplaces, learning places, monitoring and providing proper ventilation at each location. If upgrades, replacement, or maintenance are required, the American Rescue Plan funds are available and designated within the law for that use. Work has begun in that area. Where do we stand? Where are we now? Contact tracing and reporting at the building and system level with appropriate action for those who test positive and those who do not. Periodic coronavirus testing, our funds have been earmarked for that purpose too. WCEA would support additional layers of mitigation critical to curtailing the spread and transmission of the virus. Building a level of trust among employees, families, and the school community that health and safety in Wycomico County public schools is the priority. As we collaborate, Wycomico County Public School leadership should clearly and broadly communicate and enforce requirements that will keep everyone safe and our schools operating at full force. Our frontline educators needs full support by building administrators, supervisors, and school system leadership to enforce all coronavirus health and safety requirements. It is not the intention of WCEA to increase student suspensions and expulsions due to failure to comply with any of these requirements or mandates. WCEA supports a safe and healthy working and learning environment. An employer has a legal duty to provide a safe and healthy working and learning environment in our public schools. Before I leave the podium, on July 20th, I attended Wycomico County work session focused on tax abatement. The needs of our schools and students changes over time, but funding hasn't kept up. The tax abatement may further threaten school funding. WCEA is dedicated to full funding of our public schools with competitive salaries for our dedicated teachers and support staff, smaller class sizes to benefit the needs of our students, and using the dedicated funding to properly ensure the physical safety and wellness of our work and learning environment. The equation mentioned during the last meeting, A equals...
Are you close to winding up, Mrs. Smith, because we're way past? Thank you.
A equals C equals B isn't true. Though WCEA agreed to the policy, it is not reasonable to say that the union agreed to a procedure it had not seen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Darren Lombardo.
Good afternoon. Before you start, my timer, I would like an extra 60 seconds along with all of these people as well. Laptop use here in the county. Laptop use in this county, laptops are great, systems are great. What you use them for can be great, but I wanted to warn you, they're good as a supplement in the classroom, not a replacement for pencil and paper. And as I've seen in the past year and a half utilizing the computers, becoming more dependent on it, we already have a problem with smartphones. And so to, we're actually not equipping the students, but actually disabling them. And so they need to have a balance of written skills, because none of these kids coming out of the school system could even write a paper. I don't know if you know that. It's, it's very bad. Literacy is very bad. So I wouldn't want to add to that problem, but seriously consider that also as it relates to computers in the upcoming year. I wanted to encourage you, since we've invested in the technology to work in a remote environment, we have invested in a tremendous amount of cameras in the classroom and Zoom sessions. So I would ask that the school system highly consider creating a registry process for parents so that they can log into a Zoom session and visit the class at any time. The technology and the equipment is already invested, it's already there. Just wanted to say, all throughout the school years, from multiple principals through the years, and even coming from officials, that every day is education week here at WCPS. We encourage you to stop by the classroom, visit the teacher, see what's going on in the classroom. If that still holds true in the name of transparency and in the name of parent involvement, we are, wanted to encourage you to consider that. There's going to be people that don't like that idea of accountability, but I think establishing trust with the parents, that's the first line. And if there's nothing to hide, then we'd gladly open up our doors and welcome parents to be involved with the students. And as it says in many of your policies, that there is a responsibility and role of the parent to be part of the education of the student. And I think together between the school system, between teachers, and having that alliance, we can make education great. On another note, I read something in the past week about implementing a financial literacy course in the school system. And I have said many times, that is one of the most important things we can do, because these kids aren't equipped when they go out in the real world. They can't balance checkbook, they can't do anything. So it's absolutely great and encourage you and applaud you if you implement that before, as a requirement for graduation, because that is absolutely awesome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. Mr. Fred Conley, block scheduling.
Third time's the charm, hopefully.
And you did write "again," but I wasn't going to say that.
I did what?
You wrote "block scheduling again."
Again, that's right. So, so my first two were kind of going over my, my findings on block scheduling. Just want to summarize to the board kind of what those three were. So two whole vacation days for me, an evening aside, it's important. Number one, it's 20% less class time. Please remember 20% less classroom time under block scheduling. Two, AP test scores just came out, I think on the 22nd. I've only been able to talk to three students and parents so far, because all three are very disappointed in their scores. While they do blame virtual as part of it, they also have a part of it being block scheduling, hence finishing classes in January, taking an exam in May. Their test scores went down. Please know that, that's a fact. Number three, this flex period that we're going to have under block scheduling, at best, at best, is a poorly supervised study hall. It is a free time. There is no instruction going on during this flex period if you don't have a class. Number four, I'd like to suggest, if it's such a great program, why do we have to do all four high schools at once? If it's such a great program, let's do it under one. Try it out, see how it goes. Keep in mind, North Carolina, 85% of their schools are in some sort of block scheduling, yet they rank in the bottom half nationally. It just plain doesn't work, folks. You can't put a 14-year-old in four 80-minute classes five days a week. I survive Common Core Math with my students, and even under Common Core Math, four is less than seven. There are less opportunities for kids under block scheduling, not more. Finally, I want to say, Mr. Briggs did say he spoke to many parents. I've spoken to 100. I can't find parents, teachers, and students. I've spoken to a little over 100. I can't find a single one in favor of this block scheduling. I would ask the board, when these, when the administration comes to you and says they've spoken to many, please get a number. I find it hard to find out that we can speak to many when parents aren't allowed in the schools, we're in the middle of a pandemic, you're not really out in public a whole lot, yet we were able to identify many parents, students, and teachers in favor of block scheduling. I would challenge that. I don't think that's accurate. I greatly appreciate your time over these last three sessions, and I'd please ask you to not support block scheduling for our high schools. Not a time to experiment with these children's education. Get them back to what they know, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Bev Urick, retired educational personnel.
I'm here as president of the Wycomico Retired Educational Personnel, and with me is Connie Jenkins, who is our hospitality chairperson. On behalf of the executive board, we want to thank you for the time and the interest that you take in, you take in our students, our staff, and our parents in the Wycomico County school system. We know that you have faced many challenging times and you've had to make difficult decisions. I've been in on your Zoom meetings, so I can, I can see the business that you've had. We also know that it's not over, and that there will probably be more challenging times, and that there will be more difficult decisions that, that need to be made. We just want you to know that we appreciate all that you do, that we support your endeavors, and once again, we thank you for your service as well as we thank your staff as well. So here's to a great year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Edward Lee, financial literacy is the topic.
I'm here to make a request of the board for a work session appointment. Good afternoon. My name is Edward Lee. I live at 205 South Collins Street in Snow Hill. I am a real estate agent with ERA Associates with 13 years experience. I am the founder of Teach Them to Fish, the Financial Literacy Home Ownership Project. Today, however, I'm here in the capacity of co-chairperson of the Wycomico County Vulnerable Populations Task Force Subcommittee on Financial Literacy. The Wycomico County Vulnerable Populations Task Force wants to make the board aware of the alarming number of high school students that are graduating with insufficient financial literacy skills. The task force is recommending that all students graduating Wycomico County high schools be required to take financial literacy as a requirement for graduation. Poor money management skills has many past high school students buried in debt and unable to navigate ordinary financial systems. They are being denied home ownership, not because of redlining, but because of poor credit and credit worthiness. The choices that today's students have to make tomorrow as adults are grounded in how well they are prepared and educated regarding management and financial, and finances as it relates to their personal development today. The committee is asking the Board of Education for an appointment to meet with its members in a work session for a full discussion on the committee's stated recommendations. The committee's desired outcome is to develop a joint action plan and a reasonable timeline that the board will consider for implementation, that implementation that requires all students take financial literacy for graduation. The committee holds that the facts and data support the need to adequately prepare graduates today for tomorrow's challenges. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Molly Hiligoss, financial literacy.
Hello, everyone. I'm Molly Hiligoss. I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County. I'm also the treasurer of the Wycomico Rotary Club, the president of the Seroptimists International of Salisbury, and the co-chair of the Vulnerable Population Task Force Housing Work Group. I am in full support of the presentation that has just been delivered to you by Mr. Eddie Lee, but there are a couple of facts that I thought you might be interested to know. Prior to COVID, there were 11,000, 11,000 failure-to-pay-rent cases just in Wycomico County. Okay, let's let that sink in for a minute. Out of that, every month, 45 families were evicted from their homes. What if, what if some of those families had received financial literacy in high school as a requirement? And so I thought I would read this also to you if I have time. This is from WUSA, and it was, it was written in April of this year, of last year. Plans are in motion to bring a financial literacy course to all public schools in Prince George's County. The 2024 class will be the first required to pass the course in order to graduate. If there was ever a time to understand your money, how your money works, the lack thereof, or when you owe it, it is now. The impact of COVID-19 on the economy has taught a lot of lessons, which some people have had to learn the hard way. I could go on, but I will tell you, we have funded 1.2 million so far since June 1st on rent assistance, June 1st of this year, here in Wycomico County. And the average income of a family of four that's receiving this assistance is only 25,000 a year. They are spending over 60% of their after-tax money on rent. So we have so many issues, but let's, let's really, really think hard about how we can set our students up for success for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michelle Bradley, financial literacy is the topic.
Hi, good afternoon, Michelle Bradley. I am here as an advocate of the proposal that was also passed around you and a member of the Vulnerable Task Force Subcommittee on Financial Literacy and Housing as well. As a housing counselor and financial literacy coach, we have seen a spike in the number of high school students that are graduating with insufficient financial literacy skills who have very little understanding of income versus expenses. Also, need versus want. COVID has made this even more apparent to those of us in the profession. Underemployed clients that come to us in our office freely admit that their income has, when their income has changed, they did not know how to adjust their budget or how to spend stimulus funds that they received on what they needed versus what they wanted in some cases. Or they just felt so overwhelmed that their debt had grown so large that the stimulus would not even make a dent. Recent graduates that have called our office have stated that when looking to move out to an apartment on their own, they had no clear understanding of how the credit works or affects their ability to find affordable housing, how to set up a checking or savings account, or how even to compare their bank statements with the usage of their debit card when making a budget, a budget to determine debt-to-income ratios. And when Molly was pointing out that they're spending 60% of their income on rent, it should be close to 30. So that's, that's huge. That's huge. Not every family unit has the skill set to teach their children those daily living financial skills, which can be very harmful to some of our underserved populations. My recommendation is to the board, is for all students graduating Wycomico County high schools be required to take a financial literacy course in order to graduate. Thank you.
Thank you. Final comment, I'm sorry I can't read the last name, but I believe the first name is Aubrey?
Can you read the first name?
It's Aubrey, I believe. Topic was financial literacy. If I just completely read their name.
Anthony?
Anthony. I'm sorry, I couldn't read it. He, I just couldn't read it, I'm sorry.
You were close.
I was close, I had an A in it, right? I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Anthony Dickerson. I'm the Executive Director of the Christian Shelter, and also the, I serve on the Vulnerable Population Task Force in regards to financial literacy. For starters, we know that our families, they do not have a money problem, they have a money management problem. 69% of parents admit they are reluctant about talking to their children about financial literacy. So what do they tell us? How does the situation impact future generations? If students can't depend on obtaining their financial proneness at home, can schools offer the opportunity? The answer is gray. The next generation, personal finance, they did, they conducted a survey of 11,000 high schools' course catalogs and uncovered a surprising lack of financial education taught in schools. And according to the study, a mere one in six high stu, students are required to take at least one semester of personal finance to graduate. In 2019, only 16.9% of finance courses required for graduation. The study also revealed there were 23 states and the District Columbia, less than 5% of the students were required to take a standalone semester of financial literacy. While many schools are doing the bare minimum, it's not enough. We can't effectively teach financial literacy in a condensed format and expect significant results. Traditional approaches, such as incorporating the topic into a broader economic course, don't give students the chance to engage in the real-world experiences. While they can foster real-life mastery of financial skills, they need to succeed. And in my conclusion, without financial literacy, divorce rates soar, families rupture, women stay with abused men for financial security, a lack of job contributes to riots and illegal activity. Name any situation, it all goes back to financial literacy. And in the words of Mr. Miyagi, we don't have, everything is Kung-Fu, but I want to say, everything is financial literacy.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name. Thank you to all for your public comment. The board absolutely takes all of this under advisement, and it's very important that the public continue to come in here and give us your thoughts and opinions on subjects. So thank you once again. 3.5, superintendent's report. Dr. Hanlon?
Good afternoon, Mr. Malone and members of the board. Under my report today, I have three items. I want to start by thanking those of you who have come to speak to the board tonight, especially about financial literacy. We're in total agreement about the importance of instruction in personal financial literacy. I appreciate the leadership of Dr. Briggs and his willingness to work with your group to answer your questions and to think about how improvements in those areas can be, can be made. I especially appreciated your comment, Mr. Dickerson. I especially appreciated your comment, Mr. Dickerson, about the real-world application. And so we are, as I believe you know, we have a very strong partnership with Junior Achievement of the Eastern Shore, and that's just part of our approach to addressing the standards of financial literacy. But we're really, really excited about the recent announcement about their finance part virtual that's going to be right here in Salisbury, where students will have an opportunity to go on and actually, to go there and have a simulated experience in the area of financial literacy. So that's just a little piece. When the regulation was enacted by the State of Maryland, the COMAR regulation in 2010, I was in Washington County, but I remember the conversations among school systems about how to implement the regulations in COMAR and, and this question about whether it should be a standalone graduation requirement or whether it should be embedded in curriculum across grades. And most of the school systems, with the exception of a few, and it sounds like Prince George's County has just decided to, to implement a standalone course, went with the, the implementation or addressing the standards that are in COMAR through financial literacy that have to be addressed across grade levels in a variety of content areas. I don't know the history of how that decision was made here in 2010. I can tell you that making a decision to add a graduation requirement is a major decision, as you can imagine. In a lot of cases, it is very beneficial. It's, there's a good return on investment, but as stewards of taxpayer dollars, we have to ensure that before we make that decision, that we've weighed all of the options. So what we're going to be doing is going back and looking at, first of all, the history of the decision that was made here back in 2010 and why we chose to implement those standards across all grade levels, K to 12, instead of a standalone course. And then look at the pros and cons of a standalone financial literacy graduation requirement. So we are beginning to work on that, and I know Dr. Briggs will continue to work with you and share with you our progress in that area. And I, I just can't tell you strongly enough how much we agree about its importance and, and the impact that students' understanding of financial literacy, personal financial literacy, affects their ability to be good citizens in the community. So, thank you. Okay. My second item is to talk about the opening of the school year. And I'll, I'll start by saying that we are so excited to begin a brand-new school year and our ability to have face-to-face instruction with our students five days a week with full classrooms of students, beginning on September the 8th. While the pandemic is not yet behind us, we are, that is our focus. We spent too much time out of classrooms last year. We are focused on returning to face-to-face instruction. We're going to take lessons learned from COVID and, and adjust as we move forward. As I often said in my comments to the community and to staff during the pandemic, I do believe we will come out stronger on the other side of this. We're not on the other side of it yet, but I do believe that we will. So throughout the pandemic, we have worked very closely with state and local health officials, including Mrs. Lori Brewster from the Wycomico County Health Office. And Wycomico County, according to the CDC, and many of you are familiar with this, is at, currently at the most extreme level of the four categories of community transmission. There's low, moderate, substantial, and high. We are currently in the high transmission rate. We are where we were back end of January, beginning of February last year. And we need to take that, as some of you have said, very seriously. The CDC and the Maryland Department of Health and the Wycomico County Health Department are recommending full masking for all students and staff, no matter the age or vaccination status, as long as we are in the substantial or the high transmission categories, which we are, as I said. And we are accepting those recommendations. So in Wycomico schools, beginning Wednesday, August the 11th, when indoors in a WCPS facility, all students and staff will wear masks regardless of age or vaccination status. There will be some exceptions, including when students are eating. When students are outdoors, students and staff will not be required to wear masks. And there will be other limited exceptions that we're working through those details now. And federal law, of course, still requires universal masking on school buses. Our goal, and I can't emphasize this enough, our goal is to keep our schools open. And to achieve this goal, we need to adhere to the guidance of our health experts by layering multiple mitigation strategies. In addition to universal masking, we will continue to provide diagnostic testing for COVID. We will physically distance at three feet in our buildings to the extent possible. We will stress handwashing. We will follow guidance on airflow in our buildings, and we will continue to, with enhanced cleaning measures in our buildings. We're going to continue to provide clinics with the administrate, for the administration of the vaccine. And as someone said earlier, that is the top priority. The vaccination is the answer. While we're not requiring that, we hope that more and more students and staff who are eligible will receive the vaccine. No one's comfortable. No one's comfortable wearing a mask. I don't want to wear a mask, but it is the right thing to do. It is a piece of what we can do to ensure that our students are safe and that we are able to keep our buildings open. So as long as the CDC and the local health department have this guidance in place and we are in the high-to-substantial metric area, the transmission area, we will be masking in our buildings. If that metric should come down to the, to the moderate or even hopefully low area, we will not mask. We will be following the science, following the metrics, the guidance of our local health experts in order to make a difference in our community and with our students. Mr. Malone, do you want to make any comments or?
Do folks have, on the Board have comments about the recommendation from the Superintendent on masking?
I'll go first. I absolutely understand and respect the recommendation from the Superintendent. However, I personally feel that it should be parent's choice. I feel that it should, we are doing the things that we need to do. Those who need to wear a mask should be able to wear a mask, but those who are working and following the guidelines that were asked along with vaccination, I feel that it should be a parent's choice. And I know that we all have our own personal opinions when it comes to that. But I respect your recommendation as the Superintendent. However, I would prefer that there be an option.
Anyone else?
Jean, I'd like to just tag on to what Tony was talking about. The Superintendent does have the right to, to come out with this suggestion, and I respect that decision. However, I also believe that we should have an option out there. And parents in District 5, if you would like to call me, just go to the website and you can get my email. My home phone number is there. And we could discuss this topic and other topics that's currently going to come up. And I would expect that all parents to actively contact their representatives and come up with their opinions about what they would like to see done and give us some excuses, excuses for that, some reasoning why you would like to mask, unmask, do the optional choice. And that would help us with some future decisions that we have to make.
Mr. Malone?
Ms. Sifowski?
I understand and respect Dr. Hanlon's position. I understand many things that I don't agree with. And those of you who know me well know that I do give my opinions. I agree with a parent's choice. I personally do not like mandates. I would like to have options for the parents. But the Superintendent is in charge. This is why we hired her. And we expect her to carry out whatever she feels is necessary to be carried out. And as Dr. Hanlon knows, I don't always agree with her, but I understand her, her positions. And those of you who live in District 4, if you want to discuss this with me, or anybody, not necessarily District 4, but anyone who would like to discuss this with me, my phone number is listed, or you can email me. I'm always available. And one parent said she had heard that school board members did not return emails, and she said she really thanked me for returning her emails. I do return emails, and I do return telephone calls.
Others? Okay, we'll conclude that part, and I'll put in my opinion. Dr. Hanlon and I have talked about this ad nauseam. I truly believe that it should be family choice, parental choice, whatever choice. I'm not sure of the benefit of the mask for the cognitive learning of students, but I support the Superintendent's recommendation in that we are charged with keeping the school as safe and healthy as possible. That's our marching orders, and certainly it's hers. And I'm going to rely on her that when we do drop to moderate, and we will, and to low, that we'll take the masks off. Do you have other things under Superintendent's report?
Grant's report from Dr. Briggs.
Good afternoon. I'm pleased to be able to share some information from our July Grants Report. This past month, we received funding from nine grants totaling over $2 million, including our Judy Center Grants to support our programs at Pemberton and Beaver Run, three MSDE Grants to help with summer programming, reopening in the fall, and trauma and behavioral health supports for our students, and four smaller Grants for spreading kindness, supporting CTE, and providing summer work opportunities for our students. Additionally, in July, we submitted applications for another nine Grants and other forward to updating everyone on their status at an upcoming Board meeting. Thank you.
Okay, that's all Dr. Hanlon has. 4.1, Approval of Open Session Minutes from July 13th Regular Meeting and July 20th Work Session. Hopefully you had time to review them. If you have any corrections or additions, let me know. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay. 5.1 through 5.6 are our consent items. So upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, is there a motion to approve the consent items?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carried.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
About one of those. No?
Actually, we've already approved the consent items, right?
Oh, I know. I don't disagree with it.
Okay.
I was just asking a question.
Okay.
The numbers for the CTE for the students that are in-state and out-of-state, were those in any way affected by COVID? Or are these the same similar rates as last year? Jesse? So these are lower, and that was from grants or funding or because of pandemic? Now, is there any type of scholarship for students or anything like that? I, I, I just wasn't sure. I was asking if there was like a special case where a student would need to come to CTE in, in our county where they didn't have an option somewhere else? Was there any type of funds for them or reduction of rate? Is that a Mr. Stoffler question?
I would just say that we base our rates off of the funding that we receive for those particular programs from both, you know, the state and other funding sources. There are times where there may be agreements that are worked out between district to district, where another district may support in the funding from that district to us, a student coming to us for those particular reasons. Correct.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay. 6.1. For many years, the State of Maryland has required students to earn one-half credit in health education and one-half credit in physical education in order to earn a high school diploma. Wycomico County Public Schools has gone beyond those requirements by mandating an additional half-credit in PE. On May 25th, 2021, the Maryland State Department of Education approved changes to the high school graduation requirements, including an increase to one full credit of health education for incoming ninth-grade students in Fall 2021. This additional requirement has both fiscal and human resource impacts for local school districts. We recommend that we address this new mandate by realigning health and physical education curriculum so that the total requirement will continue to be 1.5 credits, shifting to one-half credit for physical education and one credit for health. In doing so, current health-related topics that are taught in physical education would be taught in health, and existing PE staff will be available to teach the new health education course. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, is there a motion to approve the realignment in health and physical education credit requirements for graduation to exactly match the state requirements? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, I guess, is Dr. Briggs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Malone. So I'm going to share some additional information, and I'll probably restate some of what you just shared, just to make sure everybody is all on the same page. And I also have Dr. Ray Gore and Mr. Brady, who will assist me in answering any questions you might have. So as Mr. Malone pointed out, on May 25th, 2021, the Maryland State Department of Education approved changes to the high school graduation requirements for students entering the ninth grade in the 21-22 school year, including a minimum of 22 credits, and that's up from 21, four credits in mathematics, and that's up from three, and an increase to one full credit of health education, up from one-half credit. The change in mathematics and the subsequent adjustment from 21 to 22 total credits will have little impact on us as a district, as all of our students were already required to be enrolled in mathematics course each year in high school. So we feel confident that we can address this change with our existing mathematics staff. However, the change in health could potentially have a larger impact. For many years, the State of Maryland has required students to earn a half-credit in both health education and physical education in order to earn a high school diploma. Wycomico County Public Schools have gone beyond these requirements by mandating an additional half-credit in PE. In some, WCPS students had a requirement of 1.5 total credits in health and physical education, as opposed to the one total credit required by the state. Our recommendation is that we address this new mandate by realigning our health and physical education curriculum so that the total requirement will continue to be 1.5 credits, shifting to a half-credit for PE and one credit for health. In doing so, current health-related topics that are taught in physical education would be taught in health, and existing PE staff will be available to teach the new health education course. This fall, Health 1 and Health 2 course descriptions will be developed to include all required topics and essential curriculum. The plan is for Health 1 course to be taught in a classroom environment, while Health 2 will be a hybrid course, including classroom instruction and practical applications in the fitness room, gym, and outdoor PE spaces. This will ensure our students have continued access to physical activity in their 1.5 credits of health and PE. As has always been the case, students who wish may elect to take additional physical education courses as electives. We stand for any questions you might have and appreciate your consideration in aligning our health and PE credit requirements for graduation to exactly match those of the state. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Briggs?
Will this new curriculum be brought into the Curriculum Committee? The new curriculum, because it's now going to be one credit instead of a half.
Correct. So the, the new curri, so this year's class, health, the traditional health class, which is traditionally taught to our 10th-grade students, will continue this school year. As the new health curriculum is developed, we'll come before the Curriculum Council for approval. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, I assume you're ready to vote on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carrie, thank you. 6.2. Per the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to accept the proposal, Exhibit I from the firm of the Wading Turner Contracting Company for construction management at Risk Design Build Services for Design, pre-construction and construction phases for the Pinehurst Elementary, HVAC and window project, and authorize issuance of a contract consistent with the terms set forth in the RFP? Final contract shall be in a form acceptable to the superintendent and board's legal counsel and include all contract documents, general conditions, and supplementary conditions of the contract, as well as the final agreed-upon negotiated items of the contract. Request is also made to authorize issuance of a notice to proceed to the CMR DB firm. Note, the final contract shall be subject to all approvals of the IAC as may be required. Is there a motion to accept the proposal and authorize the work as indicated?
Move to accept.
Is there a second? Is there a motion to make these shorter that I have to read in the future? Just a joke, sorry. We'll go to Liesel Ashby.
Good afternoon, Dr. Hanlon, Chair Malone, Vice Chair Murray, and board members. Separate projects for an HVAC renovation and window and door replacement for Pinehurst have been in the capital improvement plan for several years. A feasibility study was completed for the HVAC portion of the project last year and was in the board's top 10 priority list for FY 2022. With potential access to ARPS or III funds, these eligible projects were combined. In order to meet the deadlines of the ARPS or III funds, this project is proceeding as design-build. This approach provides both design and construction through a single contract, saving time in the design process in conjunction with the construction manager's expertise in construction budgeting and phasing. Per board policy, a two-step selection process was utilized. This will be a multi-phase occupied systemic renovation, and today's approval of the finalized proposal will allow us to initiate design services to align with the pending approval of the combined project by MSDE. Are there any questions regarding this recommendation?
Other questions, Mr. Palmer?
You know, I always have questions.
I look at you as our resident construction expert on this seven-member board.
No, I was just wondering that anywhere in this project, are there any COVID-related items that's going to improve the air quality of this school?
Yes, that's the function of the ARPS or funds.
Could you be a little more specific?
Uh, this project is primarily going to be utilizing variable refrigerant flow HVAC system, which allows you to have the HVAC bring in outside air, which is contained within each individual classroom without having that air intermingling versus a centralized system. So it's a decentralized system instead of a centralized system.
So it's really all we're doing is we're increasing the air turnovers and the amount of air exchanges and everything going through the building there. There's no other direct action being taken, or has it been investigated? Has anything, can anything be done in addition to what you're doing right now? Or is the lack of funding holding it back?
For this particular project? We are doing the maximum extent possible we can to upgrade the HVAC system in relation. That, we're determining what the budget is for this project based upon the engineer's recommendations. Does that answer your question?
Uh, somewhat. Sometime, sometime in the future, I would like to sit down and have some discussions on this part right here. And, and no, I'm not just talking about UV in systems. I'm talking about other items that can be done that would not just spread the air out, but that would actually kill any disease, not only COVID, but the common cold, flu that goes around, anything that goes around. I'm speaking about something that could actually kill it and not just dilute it to a point where it's, that much is acceptable. So that is still something that I'm going to stick to, and I will ask about that in the future, which leads me to another question. And like I say, while you're there, uh, did we miss a deadline over at Beaver Run? Or did I miss a date wrong? Are we going to have that building enclosed by July 30th? Was it August 30th?
It's, it'll be occupied next year.
Not occupied, enclosed.
It'll be enclosed. It's getting close to it. The windows are going in place and such. We won't be able to occupy it until June.
I understand occupy. I'm just talking about enclosed to the elements.
So enclosed.
It's currently closed into the elements, the roof.
Yeah, I noticed those two large sections in the roof. I drive past there every day. Sometimes I drive around the back and by the ball field, and I stand along the fence and just look around. So, okay. That's all I have.
It's, it's closed in. We're weather tight.
Other questions for Liesel?
I have a question, but it's not related to this.
Okay.
Department.
Okay.
Over on, over on the west side, I go by west side an immediate. Is that roof going to be done by the start of school?
We've still got two more weeks.
Okay.
That's my, that's why I'm in jeans and my polo shirt, because I've been climbing roofs all morning.
Construction shoes on, yes. And also the portable over chipmunk, is that going to be usable?
Uh, well, we're still, that's a, I'm going to lose track of my SIR funds. I believe that's an SIR II funded project. So we're still working with the design team on the phasing. So whether we occupy the modular this fall or mid-year, I'm not sure yet. But all the parts are there, and it's been put together. And there's like some miscellaneous site work that has to be done. But we're working with the building principal. As soon as we know more, we've been coordinating with her all along. These projects are moving extremely, extremely fast. So we appreciate everybody's patience and flexibility. As soon as we know, we will.
Thank you.
How is the project moving over at Mardella? Have there been any hiccups, or we're moving on schedule? There's going to be hiccups everywhere, I suppose. But.
So Mardella is about at the 50% complete design development phase. It'll be coming forward to the School Building Commission, typical process, for their approval of design development, and then it'll come forward for the board, for your authorization. And then it will be submitted to the interagency committee and the Department of General Services. I'm trying not to use too many acronyms today.
I appreciate that.
For their, for their authorization to then proceed into construction documents.
So we're doing good on our timeframe.
We are on schedule.
Wonderful.
Could you just refresh my memory? What is the date of completion at Mardella?
Well, that will be dependent upon continued funding support from both local government and the state. So the current schedule we're trying to work towards is a first-quarter construction start of 2023 with a completion or occupancy in 2026.
Thank you.
Liesel, you having any problem with the material procurement? And contractors having problems getting help and getting their projects done?
Yes, I'm, I have an issue in my department. I have a wonderful construction manager with many, many years of experience who is retiring September 30th, and I'm probably going to have a really tough time replacing him. I can't compete with the private sector, unfortunately. There's labor shortage, there's material shortages. As we always try to do, is we put contingencies in place. Beaver Run, thankfully, we were ahead of it. We got a ton of Conex boxes, ordered materials early and stored them on-site so that they were available when the applicable phase. You can only do that for so long until, depending on what material you are in need of, reaches its catch-up factor on production efforts. Roofing projects, we're having problems of all things, these little washers, you know? Okay, that was, the nails were there, the roofing adhesive was there, the materials were there, the washers were, were missing. They, they ended up coming, but it's, it's rather random. There's computer chip issues. It depends on what material you're, you're talking about. We've experienced hiccups, to use Ms. Lewis's comment. Everywhere we've, we've looked, we just Plan B, Plan C, Plan D, and keep everybody informed along the way.
Yeah, I think that system you have of ordering these large components way ahead of time and then storing, storing them in some of our facilities is a really great management tool.
Thank you.
Really good, and I'm really glad to see you're doing that.
I have a question. Over at Parkside, in the parking lot over by Shoemaker, there are three large United van lines, vans. I understand they are storing furniture from the Shoemaker complex. You're doing the floors. What is the timeline on that?
We'll be, we should be completed with floors by the time the teachers come back. I believe that's the 26th. Is that correct? So, 25th, pardon me. I was close.
And then the storage units will be moved from the parking lot?
Correct. As soon as that furniture can come out, they'll be relocated.
Thank you.
But wonderful job for you and your, your team for coordinating all of this, staying on track, making sure that we know what acronyms mean and where monies come from, and that we are getting these projects done at the schools when the funds are there in a timely manner to make it a better environment for the children. So, thank you for that.
And, and I did what she's saying, because your whole department, your team, has had a rough year in the past with COVID, working around that. And now, of course, the shortage that every one of us in this room experienced in our personal daily lives and getting materials and things that we need, so I, my kudos, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ashby. I assume we're ready to vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's Carrie.
I almost forgot what project we were talking about.
We had you cornered.
Okay, 7.1, board member reports. I'll start to my left this time. I think I started to the right last time, but nobody's going to remember that anyway. So Ms. Suthausky?
I have two shout-outs that I would like to do. This Saturday, August the 14th, from 10:00 to 4:00, will be Del Marvellous Festival at the Ward Museum. This is a family-friendly free event with many activities for children, specifically kite-making and sandcastle building. And I will be there all day long, so I want to meet as many Wycomico County families as I can. I also want to shout out one of my favorite things to do, and that is cooking with herbs. And the MAC Incorporated is going to have their Summer Institute, which is 18 courses from 17th to 19th and 24th to 26th of August. These will be by Zoom. And on August the 24th, I will be doing my cooking with herbs. And so if you want to go to the MAC website, and would love to have you tune in and watch me do my thing. I attended the 100th anniversary of the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce. What a great event. I can't imagine the amount of planning that went into this. And what was so great is that since people had been isolated for a couple of years, I saw many, many friends that I had not had a chance to see for a couple of years. It was a great evening. I also attended the end of summer session activities at Beaver Run and at North Salisbury. And I had a chance to see the new school at Beaver Run. And it looks like it's almost ready to go into. It looks so great. And I'm looking forward to the opening of the school year. And I hope the principals will notify Andrea here at the board so that we will know what you are doing to open your schools. Are you having a meet and greet with parents? Are you going to have special festivities on the first day of school? Let us know so that we can attend these, because if you don't tell us, we don't know about them. So this is out to the principals. Please notify the board office so that we can attend these fantastic events, because I'm so excited. I want to see those school buses go in front of my house.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I've talked to a number of parents who were very pleased with the summer school programs that we had. I think we had up close to about 2,000 kids going to our summer school programs with about, what, 13 different programs? And many of them were pleased to find that their students were participating and those are able to kind of bridge the gap for some of the losses they may have incurred during the times that we were out and when we're on Zoom. So to the administration and staff of all the schools who were part of the summer program, I'd like to commend you on that. Secondly, I was pleased to read in the Independent that the Purdue Foundation and the Henson Foundation have come together. I think it's the first time the two of them have come together on the same project, which will kind of some way, and somewhat, help bridge the gap when we talk about financial literacy. This will give a larger number of kids an opportunity to get involved with that program than what we currently have. They, in reality, will be the big factors in that program. And I believe they're going to name part of the building after them, and I would too if they made me that, gave me that much money. Okay. The other thing, I was in a meeting earlier today with the Community Foundation, and golly gee, we kind of looked at the number of scholarships that were given out to Wycomico County schools. We had 175 students from the Wycomico County Public School System who were given over $300 million worth of scholarships over the time. And that number just increases. And that's, has a lot to do with a lot of you who know people who support the Community Foundation. That's, I'm sure, all of us do to some extent. So those numbers are always increasing, but there's money out there for kids. And just like the parents or anybody out there maybe listening, that, that is really a source that needs to be tapped into if you have students or kids that are looking for some financial help to, going to college. And I, I'm sure that everybody, as I, are pretty much concerned about what's going to happen this coming school year. We're going to have challenges, we're going to have indifferences about what to do. But please remember, here at the board, as well as all the schools, I think everybody wants to do what's in the best interest of our students and what's in the safest way of providing an instructional day that's meaningful not only to the students, but also to the staff that's involved. And I'm certain that we've had a lot of practice with adversity, and I'm sure that we'll move forward this coming school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Well, normally I have an entire list of things to talk about, but I have actually been enjoying the summer with being home with both my children, one who is going to be going into Parkside, at which I had a dose of reality this morning as I attended freshman orientation, that I'm actually going to have a high schooler, and my daughter going into middle school. So I am looking forward to experiencing those things with them in the opening of the five days we're going to be going to school this school year. Just to reiterate on some things about the financial literacy, I think it's a fantastic program. I think that our students need to learn how to manage their funds so that they can be successful. And students can start working at the age of 14, and a lot of them get that paycheck, and the first thing they want to do is go and cash it and spend it. And I think that with some financial planning and courses for our students that we are going to create some individuals who are going to be very successful in the workplace. So I'm excited to see the plans that we are, Dr. Briggs, and our guests today are going to, to discuss, along with continuing things with junior achievement. Just a shout-out to human resources. We talked earlier, 109 new hire teachers. I think that's fantastic. The diversity is there, which is absolutely wonderful. We have individuals, males, females, and from all different ethnic groups. And I really think that that's what our county needs, because diversity, I think, is beneficial for all of our students. And just like always, I talk that I'm reading books. So I am going through some more books on our book list. Just seems something that I like to do. I'm kind of like that little book nerd. But I'm going through a lot of books. There are some that I think are absolutely fantastic, hoping we can incorporate them into our, some of our reading plans for some of our courses. And I'm just excited for school to start. I truly am. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
I'll try to be short. I've been following a program with the county council for probably about a year and a half. And it's a program that I believe is going to have some adverse effects. and it's a program that I believe is going to have some adverse effects on our funding in the future. This is a Horizons program. It's a program where some developers are being granted tax credit towards their development to help them develop downtown Salisbury. Now, we all want to see downtown Salisbury get developed. But at the last meeting, I got out there and I said, I really don't think everybody has a full idea of what is going on in this project. And what I meant by everybody was the seven members on the council. So I challenged them. I said, if I gave each of you, seven members, a piece of paper and asked you to compare and contrast the pros and cons as related to the citizens of this project, could you do it? Well, of course, they don't answer questions there. But when the topic came up after that session, you wouldn't believe it. I would encourage you to go back and look at that last county council meeting. And the point I'm trying to get across is that they're going to be voting on this, I think on the 17th of August. And they're not even all on the same page. It's personal opinion from what I've observed, but they're not on the same page. I don't think they all know what they're doing on this project and how it could affect our funding. Now, they've had people come up there in line and say how good this is going to be for the county. And of course, you know, it's like a perspective on your investments. They give you all the good things that it does and how it's going to make money for you, and then they project this all out. I try to use a little common sense, do my own investigation to find out on this. But what hasn't been related is how many similar projects like this have affected municipalities and counties in a very adverse way that has pre, presented major problems for the services provided by the county. So I encourage all of you to get involved, look into this project, call your county councilman and give them your opinions on this, and please come out to the next meeting and, and voice your opinions, because while it is not going to affect us the next budget, what happens after that is still up in the air. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Fitzgerald's having a little voice issues, and he's going to pass on board reports. I didn't want people to think I just ignored him, because I wouldn't do that. Vice Chairman, Mr. Murray?
Good afternoon, everyone. First of all, I have, I have four comments that I'd like to share in my board report today. And the first one is I want to thank all of our public speakers today, and I appreciate your voices, your sharing, your honesty, and things of, of how you feel and, and things, and it's very helpful for all of us up here. It's extremely important, the financial literacy. I have a, a big positive support of that. I, as a retired educator and principal, I, I see and I heard comments today that I've seen too. I think it's important, but I thank all of you for coming forward. The second thing I want to comment is all of us in this room have different opinions of things. We don't live at the same address, we don't drive the same cars, and we don't dress the same. And I too am very anxious for our children all to get back to school and our staff five days a week, and I support that. I want us all to be safe, and I do want the parents to have their input in the mask. I personally, you know, I'm on the fence with it. I shared earlier today when they implied that seatbelt law, I had the worst problem with that I could ever imagine. I thought, I bought this car, I pay taxes, now they're telling me how to drive it on the road. But all that being said, the safety is important. I support Dr. Hanlon and her decision, you know, whatever it is, as far as she has shared with us today, and I know that if our level changes, and I heard her say it, and all of you did, that it'll go down. I'm, I'm not in favor of it myself, but again, I want to support what's best for our children and our staff, because that's what is important, and all of us want to get back in there. The third comment that I wanted to talk about, I think it was shared that someone made a comment that board members do not return emails and phone calls. I can't speak for everyone in this room, but I feel in my heart, everyone at this front table does do that, but I can tell you and I can speak for myself that I do. And there has been a, a person in this room today, they've left now, that can guarantee what I'm saying I do. I live in the neighborhood, and they will tell you that. And I hope you're watching this right now, because I do, and it's important. That's called communication. Without communication, nothing gets accomplished. My final comment I want to talk about today is that as we move forward to the opening of a new school year, and a new school year that had, is beginning with challenges and things that none of us had ever experienced before in our life, I hope that all of us, and I'm including staff, parents, government, are all going to be supportive of each other and trying to instill in our children that there isn't a definitely right and there isn't definitely wrong, because our children are watching how adults act. And I said it earlier at a board meeting back in February, I believe, that I saw a lot of children acting a lot more mature than some adults that I'd seen recently. And I mean that. That is an important thing, and I hope all of us in this room and watching, keep that in mind as we open our new school year. It's going to be a fine, and we will get through it and think positively. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. So as far as my travels since the last board meeting, I attended the end of summer program at North Salisbury, great program. I attended Maryland Capital Enterprises fundraiser at the home of Palmer and Sandy Gillis, which was a wonderful event. Maryland Capital Enterprises provides advice and counsel to small businesses and helps them find financing, particularly to entrepreneurs who are, need assistance in locating financing. They may not qualify for a bank loan, but MCE helps them with that. It's a great organization. And in my travels just around the town, every day when I go to my office, I ride by Huaycomico County Stadium, and I see the bleachers going in, and those bleachers probably have been a long time needing to be replaced, but it looks great. It looks like they're going to be done very soon. We've talked about Beaver Run, that's almost totally enclosed, which is great. But what's even better is when I ride by Y-Hi every day this week, I see the band out there practicing. So I know, as we've all talked about, we're returning to some level of normalcy in schools. By tomorrow, tomorrow athletics starts, so I'll be able to see people out practicing soccer, field hockey, whatever. Within a month, I'll be on the soccer field with my whistle, referee, and games. And so when I think about, back to March 13th, 2020, that was the last day that we went to school under what I would call a normal school system. So we've all talked about the 18 months of what we've been through as board members. I mean, we have agonized over these decisions, as has Dr. Hanlon and her entire team, but parents out there have really had to endure some major changes, some major lifestyle changes with finding daycare for children as we Zoom, educated, finding daycare when you were in two days a week. So we're going back the day after Labor Day, five days a week, and while it's not perfect, it's close. They'll have masks on, but when we look back just six months ago, a year ago, and 18 months, we weren't in school. You didn't have a mask on, but you were sitting in front of a computer at home as a five or six-year-old, which your attention span's probably not there. So as everyone has said here, we are moving forward, we're looking very forward to the school year. I thank the staff for all they've done. I thank the parents for all you've endured, and we still want to hear from you. If you see something that you don't think is right, then we want to hear from you. In my work, we say if you see something, say something, and we're ready to hear that, either emails, phone calls, or public comment. It's wonderful. I know when I first got on this board, we never had public comment. Every, very rarely did we have public comment, and that's great that we're hearing it. So looking forward to the new school year. This is the last meeting before the new school year starts, so the next meeting, we can talk about what happened the previous week maybe, and I hope that it's all good. So with that, thank you for coming, and we're adjourned.